I call this regular session and open public hearing to order. You'll call?
Grossman present.
Bute present.
Holway present.
McCoy present.
Stroop present.
We're missing a body, right?
This is Stroop.
This is it.
Commissioner Shreier.
Oh, of course, duh, yes. Hello. Yes, okay, all right. We have a quorum, that's what's important. Okay. Please join me for a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have any feedback on the agenda format?
I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Does anybody have any feedback from the minutes? I provided my feedback to Tracy.
Yeah, Libby got, oh, yeah, Libby got mine.
Do I have a move?
Yeah, I make a motion that we accept the February 2nd and March 22nd meeting minutes with the corrections as submitted.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Before we get into the public hearing, for the folks who don't know already, Commissioner DiAmico resigned. Okay. Public hearing. The Cape Charles Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 7th, 2022, at 6:00 PM in the Cape Charles Civic Center, 500 Teweswell Avenue, to receive comment on the following. A, a conditional use permit, CUP 2022-03, application from Michelle and Nathan Davidson at 211 Madison Avenue, tax map pound 83A1-1-210 and 211, in the residential 1 zoning district for an ex-estate dwelling unit pursuant to Cape Charles zoning ordinance section 4.2J and for a swimming pool pursuant to Cape Charles zoning ordinance 3.2C5. The application is available for public review on our website at www.capecharles.org. Please contact the planning compartment at 331-2036 or by email at planner@capecharles.org if you have any questions or require additional information. Do I read when the ads were placed? No, okay, all right. Do we have any public comment?
Start the staff report first.
Okay, that's fine.
Sure. So, I have enclosed a staff report relative to this application. As noted, they are obtaining a, seeking a conditional use permit for 648 square foot accessory dwelling unit and an in-ground pool. As I indicated, we saw this last month, it wasn't fully finalized in terms of submission requirements to achieve zoning compliance. We noted that at last month's meeting. I indicated I would work with the applicant to ensure it was all correct before the advertised.
Right.
And I did work with the applicant extensively. They were using the long survey. They had come to the town almost three months ago and had applied or received a revised plaque, and they were not using the correct plaque the town had signed off on. That has been corrected. They also were informed of the square footage limitations associated with accessory dwellings based upon their lot's size. They made those revisions to that, so brought it down to 648 square feet. In addition, they were also wanting to move an existing shed somewhere else on the property. That is no longer going to happen, they're not going to retain that shed at all. It's a, I think it was an 80 square foot shed, it was very small. And then, lastly, we verified the height and the square footage overall of each of the buildings and structures to ensure compliance with their zoning ordinance. And so that is all correct, which allow me to place the advertising for pure tonight's meeting. So with that said, getting into the meat of their application, they do need an accessory dwelling unit cup, and they also need a cup for the in-ground pool. We'll see through the narrative of why they are seeking these things as part of their application. It doesn't require your approval, but it's relevant to it, and they are seeking addition to the principal house. And they expressed their needs that are driving that relative to their family circumstances, needing the extension to the house that increased the square footage overall of the house. The in-ground pool is part of a health regimen for their son, who's going to be living with them. And the accessory dwelling unit, the mother of the lot, was proposed to move in to occupy that space.
Right.
So, they want to meet their own requirements. They will be, they were going to be present this evening, but they've had a circumstance arise that they can participate by phone in an emergency they just cannot pull away from. With that said, we will get them to revise their ADU affidavit to reflect all of the corrected information in the zoning compliance relative to the square footage, et cetera, and have them sign that before it moves on to the town council for their public hearing process. So, that is my staff report.
Any discussion?
I have a question for Katie. Katie?
Well, we're not into discussion of a public hearing.
Oh, sorry, 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 sorry.
So, at this point, I, we don't believe we have, no one signed up for public comment on this particular matter.
I'll make a motion that we close public hearing.
Second?
Second.
Any opposed? Public hearing closed. Do we have any applications for comments? Not subject to advertised public hearing?
I do not.
No? Okay. Unfinished business. Continued discussion. ZMA 2022-01, application from Cape Charles Ventures LLC to conditionally rezone 238 Randolph Avenue, tax map number 83A31-625A, from residential 1 to commercial 1, proffers to limit the commercial activity of said proposed rezoning.
Since this, this matter was tabled, so there would actually need to be a vote to take this off the table, to begin the conversation.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we take this off the table and begin conversation on this side.
Second?
Second.
Any opposed? Discussion?
I guess before we start, let me just ask something in general, Katie. If there was enough ins and outs, whatever, to justify a working session, say, with the applicants and all, is that more in your purview of what you do than ours, that that wouldn't be appropriate, or I'm just, if we get into, because I know it's a very complex situation?
You can do that, except right now, a motion to remove from the table has to be, the vote has to be concluded, so are we taking this off the table?
I think I seconded it.
You second it, he needs to call for the vote.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay. To replay the tape?
So, with that said, we can have conversation this evening, and in whatever fashion you would like to do so, I would hope we have some extensive conversation. I have written a staff report on this, I have some thoughts relative to the process, information to report back to you, as you requested of me, and if we've, if the planning commission feels further conversation is warranted with the applicant, you absolutely can do that.
Okay.
I will remind you all, the 100-day deadline from when you receive this application to when you have to take action and provide a recommendation is July 14th. So, we have 14th.
July 14th.
So, you have, you have some time to work into this, but we need to provide, if we're going to give a recommendation, it needs to be done by July 14th. If you fail to give a recommendation, just to remind you of the legal ramifications, it automatically goes to the town council with what is presumed an affirmative approval from the planning commission.
Okay.
Okay? So, with that said, if I can go through the staff report a bit?
Sure.
As requested at the last meeting, and we tabled it, asking if there was some mechanism out there to see if we could still leave it residential, residentially zoned, but allow us to let some of these uses to continue in some form of legal non-conforming capacity. So, part of the legal non-conforming, I did quote the entire law to you so that you were familiar with what's in our ordinance today and what my standards are that I have to meet to reach a legal non-conforming status. It has to be in existence prior to when the town adopted zoning, which was, for us, was July 14th, 1992. So, I had to do enough legal research on the, on the properties, and I did do the research for both properties, both the hotel itself, which is the principal use being considered here, and the residential lot, which is the ancillary or accessory property in conjunction of use for the hotel in a support function. And I did, I did lots of research. Yes, there's been consistent reference of some sort of easement or alley, whatever term you want to call it, on that residential lot since as early as the 1921 Sanborn map, and consistently moving forward. I can't say I continue to check it all the way into the 60s and 70s, but I think seeing it in two consecutive maps showed that there is an acknowledgement that there was some sort of access into the backside of Mason Avenue properties. I will say the Sanborn map defined it as a 10-foot alley, whereas in the later easement definitions that were filed in the clerk's office, had shrunk that down to eight feet. And those were actually now recorded documents, so I'm referring it only now to eight feet at this point in time. Most important, I did check the deeds all the way back to prior to when we adopted zoning, so I got us back to 1983, which was that round, round of deeds I could find, where this property, the hotel itself, was sold from Margaret Dickinson to the Mustang Agreements. And then, from there, I had subsequent deed transfers out from, in 1999, again then in 2003, 2005. Moving on, they showed the ownership. What was interesting is both the hotel in the front and the residential lot transferred exactly the same in each of these transactions. They were separate deeds, but they all happened on, on the respective dates, so when the hotel sold, the residential lot sold to the same transfer of ownership. So, that is relevant because it seemed to start to lend some significance, maybe this could be considered legal non-conforming. However, in 2010, when the hotel sold, the residential lot did not get sold at that time. It took another four years for the residential lot to transfer in its ownership. It went to the same people who bought the hotel in 2010, which is Mr. Gomino at this point, but there was that four-year lapse on the residential lot of being under same continuous ownership and potential use associated with it. So, I find that a break in service, and that is how I would deem it as a zoning administrator, and I do not think that it meets the definition for legal non-conforming use to have been continuous and ongoing since the adoption of town zoning on that residential lot. So, I'll stop there in case there are any questions on my, my title search that I did. I'm not a title attorney, I'm not a, I'm not certified to do title examination, I've done what I just can for, for pure looking back, I may have something wrong. Mr. Gomino has seen this documentation, so if I've, if I've represented the title transfers over the years incorrectly, I hope someone would correct me.
Okay.
Okay? So...
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Do we know between 2010 and 2014, regardless of who owned it, did the hotel use that piece of land?
I do not know if, if Mr. Gomino, through his corporation, used it, they would not have legal right to use it because they did not legally own it.
Yeah, I'm not talking legal right.
I do not know.
I'm saying, did the hotel use?
I do not know.
That would have to be something that Gomino would have to...
Right, he would have to provide that information to us.
Provide and get it all, yeah.
Right. Just because there's been so much conversation about that easement slash alley, I wanted to try and put some of that information to bed, or at least get it corrected in our minds. As we all now acknowledge, that, that sort of alley has been reflected and in part of the town record since the early 20s, if not before then. But with that said, the town formally requested an easement across that, that stretch of eight feet, across that residential lot, to ensure that they could do an installation of sewer facilities, sewer pipes, et cetera, for, for the town utilities to come in and service those buildings from the backside of those, of those structures. And they did that through an actual easement that was granted to Cape Charles Ventures 2 LLC, or, sorry, let me flip that, Cape Charles Ventures 2 LLC granted the town that a sanitary sewer perpetual easement, I provided the date of that of April 25th, 2014, and the instrument number, and the specifics of that easement specifically said the installation, maintenance, operation, repair, and replacement of an underground sewer line and related sewer facilities. It also continued a non-exclusive in nature to Cape Charles Ventures 2 LLC as the fee simple owner, and any of its tenants, guests, and invitees shall be entitled to use the easement, again, it's described as an eight-foot easement, for any and all purposes that are not inconsistent with the easement itself, and further that Cape Charles Ventures 2 shall not use the easement in any way that will impair the rights of the town to provide and maintain municipal sewer services. So, while it's an established alley slash easement, it also has now been memorialized in that document with the town of an underground usage occurring, and it should not be inhibited in any way to allow continual town maintenance of that sewer facility. As I mentioned, I did not find that I could classify the ongoing use of the residential lot with the placement of the trash receptacles and the golf carts being placed there as a legal non-conforming. Again, I've provided this to Mr. Gomino, the staff report, so if, if he's able to shed further light on that, I would love to have that information, so. I will classify one, one little caveat on this, because we've talked a bit about the delivery of the propane, which did require a truck to come on to, to service the propane tank back there to fill it up as needed. Again, I could not find where actually there was zoning clearance given for that, but clearly, just to acknowledge, over the years, we've had a turnover of staff in the Department of Planning and Zoning.
Right.
And occasionally, the building official has stepped into that, that particular role as it relates to building permits getting issued, and so, they didn't wait until they had a zoning inspector, zoning officer in place, sometimes even the town manager has served in that capacity over the years.
Right.
So, I do acknowledge, and that's the position we've taken over the last year and a half, if we have seen any sort of governmental approvals being issued on anything, we, we conclude that had been given the stamp of approval by this town for that activity to occur and, and move forward with it. Even though it may not have been in compliance with our zoning ordinance, we are allowing upon those officials in their, their respective positions and authority to tell a property owner, you have the right to build and do this.
Right.
So, with that said, yes, a building permit was issued for the renovations to the hotel, which included doing whatever needed to happen for the associated utilities as part of that project. I couldn't specifically call out that the propane tank was part of that, or was it already there, the size of it, that sort of specificity was included in the documents, but clearly, there was improvements done on this property since he took ownership out of it in 2014, that was signed off by the building official. So, the tank itself, whether it's rightfully placed on the residential lot or wrongfully placed on that lot, it's there, and we are acknowledging it from the town, and we are accepting it to be a legal use and will not challenge its placement or its continued servicing of it.
Right.
Okay? So, with that said, I think, I would hope we could spend a little bit of time looking at his proffer statement that he offered. It was amended since the version you first saw to what he submitted just before the public hearing, and really go through that to see if the proffers that I did work with him on really address the concerns that were raised by the public hearing process or by staff itself. If you feel it doesn't, is there any mechanism in which we could potentially improve upon the language or the conditions or the terms to see if, if we could address the, the neighborhood issues, the public hearing issues sufficiently to garner your recommendation of approval for this or not? And so, I just want to make sure we're taking that opportunity this evening to work through each of the proffer conditions or proffer statements, to see if we've thoroughly vetted them, and do they represent something that potentially we could either say yea or nay to. So, that's where I'm going to stop at the moment and see what you'd like to do.
Let me just make a comment. You and I had a discussion earlier today where you mentioned that it would probably make, be beneficial if we incorporated some pros in the comprehensive plan to address situations like this?
Yes.
To make the administration of same a lot less painful.
Yes, and I have included that in my staff report, I just wanted to be, and I would hope to offer that as a, if you should choose to move forward with a favorable recommendation, I would like to ask you to consider a friendly amendment for me, a condition.
Okay.
So...
Go ahead, Paul.
I've got two, two questions. Has Loomis' family been contacted since the last meeting?
I spoke with Ms. Loomis this afternoon, and they are in attendance.
All right, and you didn't get an offer of anything more than what her stance was last time during your conversations?
I think Ms. Loomis could speak for herself at this point. She is present, if she wishes to add anything further, if, if this board would like to hear from her further.
Okay. Well, it's up to the chair for the...
John, go ahead. That's fine. You get to timer. If, if you're up for it.
If, if the last time we talked, did you have any, have you changed, if I misheard this, if you change your thoughts, or is there anything else you want to speak?
Or were you offered any new information that may have been?
I don't think there's been any new information.
Okay, that's fine.
I don't think.
Your choice.
Um, no, there's no new information. It's, it's parking lot.
Mm-hmm, yep.
I think yours, I think it's growing.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
Well, I hadn't, I hadn't planned to speak.
That's all right.
So, um, I do think that the growth of that lot as a parking lot is going to continue. You all addressed the fact that there are six golf carts owned by the hotel that they rent out to their patrons. Other golf carts that are rented from other locations in town also park there, and, you know, and charge their batteries and, and such. You addressed the fact that the gas truck and services come there, and I wonder if you think about how many services there are for a hotel. Everything from window cleaning to heat and air conditioning and...
And not just the hotel, there are other businesses using that same, same access.
So, there's a great deal of traffic in and out of there. To me personally, I hope, I think the hotel does a lot for the town, and therefore, I'm not opposed to the services that they need.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not opposed to the gas tank being there, they need that.
Right.
But I think the golf carts are an entirely separate issue from running the hotel. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Loomis.
Well said.
Yep.
Chair, I have a second item. Katie, again, going back to this 210 to 214 period of time, if the ownership of, of the hotel and the plot of land was with the same individual or companies or whoever, would you have still a concern?
I think the concern I would have, I would say maybe, maybe I would consider it legal non-conforming, but not all of the uses. Definitely the golf cart rental amenity that he is now included in his offerings was not original, and I would not necessarily consider that a required feature to service and maintain the hotel. It's, it's an improved or, or increased offering of service he is giving his guests, but it's not necessary nor a requirement, and so I wouldn't consider that being part of what the hotel did back in the 80s.
Okay, well, that's what I'm trying to get to. I understand the golf cart added, but if, if this, two, the hotel and this plot of land were coupled with the same ownership all the way through until now, you wouldn't have a problem with calling this non-conforming?
I would have, I would have many, many months ago considered this a legal non-conforming use occurring on the residential property, and would not have compelled him into a violation situation, let alone seek rectification of it through some administrative process such as a rezoning. I didn't think it was, it was illegal non-conforming then, I hadn't fully mapped, mapped it back as far as I needed to, to get it to the pre, pre-adoption of town zoning. I had chased the, the title probably about two or three owners back, and I felt, well, there was a break in service with the residential lot to the hotel, that was sufficient, but through this process, I went back far enough to at least chase it back to the beginning of, of prior zoning to make sure it was, it was working.
Again, I'll turn back.
Yep.
That's based on ownership. You don't know for sure whether that lot was actually used regardless of who owned it.
That's correct.
Okay, so I can assume the other way, is the hotel has been using it for years, and in this period of time of 2010 to 2014, they continued to use it and eventually decided, yep, I need to buy it?
They, they may have, but it would have been an illegal use because they didn't own it. They didn't have a legal right to continue to use it in that fashion.
No, I understand, I understand, but they, they still used it as, as a non-conforming use.
I'm...
I know we're splitting hairs, but I'm trying to get down to what you're getting through.
You are, you are splitting hairs.
Your concern is the break in service and the two-year requirement.
Yes. The legal, the legal ownership matters. You can only have a legal non-conforming use if it was legal to begin with, meaning, did you have, did you have ownership and possession and the ability to do that on that lot?
Or permission from...
Or permission to do it.
Right.
Right.
Which we don't know.
And I don't know that, that's correct. So...
So, what are you looking to us for?
So, I think if, if you are willing to do, I just want to make sure we, we walk through the proffers to make sure that they've thoroughly been vetted and, and in a, at least written in a language that you would feel acceptable if, I'm not, if, even if you find it acceptable the way the proffers are written, you still may not be supportive of this application getting rezoned. I'm not committing anybody to that decision tonight at this point. I just want to walk through the proffers.
And what page are you referring to? There's a couple versions of that.
So, I, so you saw the initial, which was, which was written, written by him in, in a layman's vernacular. I really want to do the one that was the voluntary proffer statement drafted by the attorney.
Okay.
Yes. One of the things I did as part of this process, because the town had never really been through, through true proffers and had ever adopted a form associated with it, I did do that. So, as part of this process, I created the template of this voluntary proffer statement, which the attorney then mimicked or, or followed and submitted it for us, so it's in proper recording format if we should accept these. So, with that said, I don't know what page it is in your, sorry.
Page 75, 74.
I think it's page 74. Okay, thank you. I, I don't have the same version you do, I, I do these individually. So, I'm not going to worry about the recitals, I'm going to go to the general conditions. So, again, they have stipulated what this is following pursuant to under the Code of Virginia, as well as our town zoning ordinance in this section that dictates conditional proffers and conditional rezonings. Again, these proffers would only be effective upon, upon the town's full and final approval of the rezoning application as submitted by the applicant to reclassify the property from R1 to C1. Moving on to land use, the general development, it'll be in conformance with the site plan. Again, they submitted a revised site plan, which also would be recorded if this is accepted. Just, you know, these proffers would be recorded up in Eastville if all of this is approved by the town, and will run permanently with the land. And as part of the site plan, he's indicated all the parcel lines, parcel sizes, improvement sizes and locations, private driveways and travelway locations... sizes and locations, private driveways and travelway locations, landscaping and lighting locations, utility locations, the stormwater management facilities and dimensions of undeveloped areas are shown and may be reasonably adjusted for our purposes for the final site plans as part of this process to ensure if we needed to move something by an inch or a foot, we have that capability, but that will become the final site plan. The permitted uses, the use of the property shall be limited to uses in support of and association with the permitted uses for which the hotel parcel is utilized, and namely the following. One is for deliveries, two is for waste management, three for golf cart and bicycle storage. And before we delve into the specifics of those, what that means by this very statement is precluding all other allowable permitted uses under the C1 district. It would be only these associated with the hotel that would be allowed to continue to happen on this property, but nothing else under the zoning ordinance that is a byright use in C1 would be allowed to be considered or put into place on this property. So, back to the specifics. For deliveries, it would be associated with, the address is listed of 227, 231, 237 and 241 Mason Avenue, and it's talking for propane and other service-related deliveries for the hotel parcel and the properties so located. These are all associated with the hotel and its subsidiary businesses located within the hotel. The significance of this, I think, as we have heard, is really defining and making sure we understand what are all the other service-related deliveries. Does this mean that the Cisco truck would be able to deliver back here, or would the Cisco truck still deliver at the front loading zone that the hotel has? What other service-related deliveries are associated with that? Is there... I'm just trying to think what else comes with the hotel sheet.
Laundry.
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 There's the word. Thank you. So, I would, if I was asked to define other service-related deliveries, I would say if they're, if they're getting their laundry delivered, I would consider that a service-related delivery. So, I'm just trying to make you aware of how I would define that from a zoning perspective. Would I deliver, would I say flower deliveries to the hotel, potentially, yes. Whatever beautification would happen for the interior spaces, I would probably consider that part of what a normal hotel would have delivered to their premises. Would I consider the delivery of alcohol? Again, if I'm going to require Cisco and any food services deliveries to utilize the front loading zone, I would say the same for any other food-related or water-related, maybe drink-related deliveries to happen out there and not through the back. Do I view a workman coming to do work on the premises, a service-related delivery? If their electrician is coming, I probably would not consider that a service-related delivery. They're coming to do work on the premises and I wouldn't envision them using the back for that because that means parking their vehicle, vehicles in the back. Again, we're not intending by these proffers for that to be a permanent parking lot with his exception of the golf cart and bicycle storage is the only unit of transportation he's identified would have some permanent placement on that lot. So, those are some of my interpretations of this. If I need to actually interpret it, then do we have the appropriate wording so far in this proffer statement? So, that's one thing I throw out for your consideration.
Before you move on, though, this is for deliveries, not only to the hotel, but these other establishments.
Whatever encompasses those establishments at those addresses, yes.
And do we know for a fact that deliveries are coming through the back in support of these other businesses?
I know that there have been workmen that have parked in the back and are utilizing that. Again, are those defined as service-related deliveries or not?
Well, I'm talking about the actual other addresses, which means other stores there that this proffer is covered. It's one thing to talk propane and its distribution, you know, but the propane tank is one tank. Whereas service deliveries then all of a sudden take on these other five or so locations or businesses.
I wish Mr. Gomino was here. I say this from this respect. He's indicated primarily propane servicing these other buildings. He's indicated his intent to continue to use the parking spot that's been allocated out front for the loading and unloading zone for your typical larger delivery packages of whether it be food, whether it be drink, if it's Cisco coming, UPS coming, FedEx coming, I had to think of the other delivery, sorry. They would still be using the loading and unloading zone up front. So, in that regard, I'm hearing and taking and passing on the information he shared with me of his intent and how it's currently being done. I am aware, I am very much aware, and I think Ms. Loomis has also alluded to this, that there are workmen that are utilizing that residential lot to park their trucks for the day or however long they're to service, whether it be in the hotel or any other one of these buildings. I can't, I can't say I've gone out and queried or asked them, are you here to service the business at 241 versus the 235 business? So, I think, I think there might be a need to, if we're going to move forward in a favorable fashion, we might want to request that be tightened up a little bit better.
Yeah, I'd certainly say that's the case. I'm not sure, you know, here we're talking about the hotel and what's required. The fact that they have a tank that supports the hotel and, oh, by the way, it supports the others, I'm fine with that. But all of a sudden, if I have these other five establishments being covered on the other services, you know, be, other deliveries, then to me, that's opening that up to a broader spectrum of businesses beyond the hotel.
So, what we may wish to make as one of your conditions, if you move in that direction, is you'd be comfortable with the propane, but not the other service-related deliveries?
Well, I'd be comfortable with certain service-related that support the hotel and perhaps needs to be defined as opposed to outside the front loading dock there.
I've got, I've got a question that speaks to Paul's query or Paul's concern. I thought I heard you say that those other businesses have a presence on hotel property. Did I hear you correctly?
I won't, there are some businesses that are located within the hotel, the LLC owned that the hotel utilizes all their management through.
Right.
And right now, I can't even think of a single one of them. There's a coffee shop in there.
Chukle Town. But do they have separate addresses as...
Yes.
Laid out here, they do?
Yes, they do.
Okay, so maybe these five do are associated with the hotel.
241 is the only one. I'm looking to Ken to see if he can remember 241. Is that the coffee shop?
No. 241, I believe, is where the bank is.
The bank, thank you. I knew there was something else there. There's a bank. Thank you.
And then you've got Chukle Town.
The florist.
Moving west, you've got the florist and the Almeida.
Right. And I think the Almeida and the florist are within his business, his building structure that's under the LLC name.
As are the others.
Right.
So, it may be appropriate for these particular establishments. I just would like to know for sure that it's all related to the hotel.
And he did, he did indicate that. So, as, I know at the last meeting, he spoke about which of these were businesses for the propane services, because I know there was some confusion about who was receiving propane from that tank. Those are all related to things under his LLC enterprise.
I have no problem with the propane.
Yes.
I'm getting to the special, you know, the service-related deliveries. That's my concern.
And again, I think each one of these addresses are living within the LLC building structure.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Any other questions on that?
Yeah, I too feel that other service-related deliveries is too broad if we were to accept this.
Okay.
And it may be something as simple as specifying the purpose of the other deliveries as opposed to the recipients of the other deliveries.
Okay.
All right, so he doesn't have to, he doesn't have to back himself into a corner. That's my point.
Number two was waste management. Storage and use of town waste management receptacles for the hotel parcel and the properties located at 237 and 239 Mason Avenue, Cape Charles, and potentially 7 Strawberry Street if acquired by the applicant or an entity associated with the applicant. So, I think that helps narrow down when you're looking at the addresses, 237 and 239 are specifically all hotel. And potentially, as we've heard from him, he would like to look at a future expansion, and if he can do that, that would be through the acquisition of 7 Strawberry Street. So, we told him if that it would be his intent, go ahead and include that at this point in time in the proffer statement so that we're not having to address that in the future.
Right.
I will say a couple of points on this. We've talked at length and in his site plan, he has allocated certain space for the traditional town-issued trash cans, trash receptacles. It's a lot. It's visually a lot. And then on top of that, not only is it that many that sit within the site plan itself on the residential lot, they get moved once, at least once a week down to the sidewalk. I think it sits on the sidewalk. Maybe some people put them sometimes right at the curb until, so that trash pickup could happen. I can't say that that's always pleasant to look at because his isn't, from the residential side, Randolph Avenue side, it's not a typical number of trash cans for a residential unit.
Right.
Most houses, I assume, have one, maybe two trash receptacles. I don't think they have 10 to 12 of them. I can tell you, I've had conversations with him that he would be amenable to looking at a dumpster that would be placed on the residential lot and picked up by a third-party vendor who I think is doing the, most of the town collections anyway, but he would pay for that separately on his own. And maybe we need to memorialize that willingness in this document as well at this point in time. And that eliminates having to pull trash cans down to the sidewalk and clutter them up. I know they don't always get timely removed. As soon as they get emptied, it may be a bit of time happens between when a property owner can pull them back onto their property and take them off the sidewalk. And that's, that's a criticism or comment I would make to anybody, not just to the hotel. That could be any, any residents. They may not get back to their house till 5:00 o'clock when they're finished with work for the day before they can come with their cans back onto their property. So, any little bit that we could try and help clean up the visual clutter and the maintenance of things in a truly residential neighborhood, which is what Randolph is, then I think that would be an improvement. So, I would recommend a little tweak here on the waste management proffer to see if we can memorialize how we handle that and if we can move away from the town trash receptacles to a paid service. I also would recommend one other piece to it, which I've mentioned to Mr. Gomino. I think a commitment during the season, during the actual summer season, of an increased frequency of collection would be useful as well.
Mm-hmm.
Whereas right now, I believe the town system is once a week. I think at least increasing it to twice a week of the dumpsters would be appropriate. And again, would help manage the trash better as well as any smells or other byproducts of having trash, that much trash on your site could bring. And so, I think increasing that and requiring that might be, I won't say require, putting it as a condition, whether he agrees to that condition is yet to be seen, and choosing to amend his proffer statement for that.
The other thing is, is it possible, practical to cover that dumpster?
We can enclose it. And when I say that, you can enclose it on the three sides. You can't do it on the top.
Right.
Just because of how they have to empty the dumpster.
Right.
So, in most of your municipal locations, I am familiar with, at the county level, when I, when I constructed this for the county offices, we have a very similar arrangement. It is enclosed on three sides, so it is secure from critters and...
Yep.
Sometimes the public.
Yeah, well, whatever, yeah.
And, but also under the control of who your provider is, that they can get access into it to get it emptied when scheduled.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
So, and I will say that was his intent and it was reflected in his site plan, whether it's the town receptacle components on here, he intended to shield those. So, there would be a fencing put around whatever waste management system we use. He would be enclosing it on three sides, yes.
I would also like to see something that if the 7 Strawberry Street project does occur, that there will be an increase, maybe a second dumpster, because you're almost doubling your rooms. So, when you consider the amount of trash that's produced now, adding, doubling the space is going to produce a lot more trash.
Yeah.
Something that addresses that as well.
If I might add something, that I was on Mason Avenue this morning and there was most definitely a very strong odor that residents should not have to endure. I mean, it's the price of doing business among the commercial community because it's the best they can do, but the residents haven't done anything to incur, you know, foul odors in their, on their property and in their vicinity that's coming from a commercial or commercial establishments kind of thing. So, that's, you know, it's only partially related here, but I was surprised, to tell you the truth. At first, I didn't know where it was coming from, and in fact, if somebody said, oh, that's something else over at the harbor, fine, but I took it since this is Tuesday to mean that that's what was causing it, so.
I believe that the dredging at the harbor is the source of that.
The dredging has something to do with it?
Yes.
Okay.
Right.
All right, well, that's reassuring.
I can't say for certain what caused some of the odors this morning, but, but yes.
From the dredging, okay.
It may have been.
I think we'll go through that again.
Thank, so that's not every, it's not every Tuesday kind of, because we're good. I feel better now.
[laughing].
Okay.
I had a casual observation recently that when I was looking through this package, the old high school that is now 19 units does not use town receptacles. It uses dumpsters. It's about the same size, maybe slightly smaller than the hotel. A dumpster is the way to go, and I think that's what they should do based on what I'm seeing there. That seems to be a very efficient operation.
Right.
Yeah.
So, and I do say that if it was, if this should not get approved, I can tell you, he does not have enough room on his own land to even accommodate a dumpster. And I say that because he has chosen to add a feature to the hotel of a courtyard in the back, which is commercially zoned. And that's, if this shouldn't get approved, that's where he would have to be compelled to bring back the trash receptacles to be stored and maintained on his property. A dumpster would never work there. So, I am making you aware of that. So, there's a pro and contra both solutions.
Sure.
So, I just wanted to make you aware because the dumpster has to be able to be lifted through the arm of the trash servicing vehicle, and there is no clearance for that to happen if he should ever have to really put this on the commercial property.
Right.
But I agree with you, if we move forward with this at the proposal before us this evening, I think moving in that direction is absolutely one of the conditions we should require.
Yeah.
I will offer a counterpoint to you, Mr. Buda, which is if it moves forward with the expansion at 7 Strawberry Street, I would either put in that he has to amend the site plan to include either an increased provision of another dumpster or an increased documentation of servicing of the existing dumpster. So, either add another one or, or increase the frequency of its being emptied. Yes.
Okay.
There might be the kernels of a solution there somehow, but it'd be hard tonight to work much further on that.
And then his last proffer that he has put in here is relative to the golf cart and bicycle storage for the parking, storage, charging and use of golf carts, bicycles and similar recreation equipment owned and operated by the applicant in association with the hotel parcel.
Just as we had under deliveries, I'm always skeptical when it's similar recreational equipment and we don't know what that could end up. equipment, and we don't know what that could end up being. So I'm kind of opposed to that loose wording.
And let's open up the discussion, I'm opposed to the golf carts, bicycle storage period. This, again, I'm looking at the continuous use between these two properties, aside from the 2010 to 2014, saying the hotel has used this, this is a particular expansion of the business into this particular area, aside from propane and waste management. So I'd, I'd offer up the elimination of item number three for consideration.
I agree that golf carts, bicycles, while they're a nice amenity, is not a function of a hotel, or an essential function of a hotel, and that to put that on this property would be, to me, inappropriate.
So I guess the question is, for the propane service and delivery, do those golf carts and bicycles, do we know if it has an impact on the delivery to propane? It's, because it is an eight-foot quarter, not ten, right?
Well, it's, the eight-foot alley slash easement, I think we clearly heard testimony that's probably not large enough for today's vehicles, just being candid with it.
The storage is on one side of the property, you know, on the other side for the easing, so we're not talking easing, but just storing bicycles and golf carts on that property.
Right, right. And so, so that, that was one of the things when we did this, when he submitted the site plan, we ensured that the eight-foot easement was really not encumbered by any of these proposed uses, but they were located elsewhere on the property if, if this rezoning should go forward. So where he's proposing the golf carts to be installed is away from that easement, so nothing is encumbering that easement.
Right, okay.
So.
So I don't know if there's a consensus on the golf carts and bicycles being removed, or not, provide directions to zoning administrator.
I have a comment, but it's just a comment as another commissioner, nothing more. And keep me honest here, is he not running what would typically be considered an upscale business in town? Upscale meaning the look, the feel, the amenities provided are closer in character to what's expected in a more urban environment than here?
I think that's an accurate statement. I think it's accurate from any hotel services currently within the county as a whole. They don't typically offer these services. They make you aware of where you can, if you wish to rent a golf cart or, or a bike, they have those relationships, and they'll, they provide you that vendor information to make those arrangements, but I don't think any hotel right now is offering that.
That's fair.
And again, I, I talk to my own experience when I go stay somewhere, say, in a larger metropolitan area of, say, DC or New York, they may offer me the ability through their, through their concierge to get Broadway tickets, for example, but they're not giving me the tickets for free. They're, they're helping to arrange the facilitation requirement, I've said, but I still got to pay the, pay the freight, so to speak. You may still have to do that here. They, they've taken out the middleman, so to speak, and, and now offering us an amenity, just like getting ice for your ice bucket, or offering you drinks in your hotel room. Some hotels still do that, some don't anymore. You pay for all of it now, but anyway. And again, I don't know if, I assume he is charging for the use of those golf carts as well, it's a service added to the bill. I don't know that for certain, that's just an assumption I am making, so he can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't typically see golf carts as a required feature to running of any lodging place like a hotel, motel, bed and breakfast, and any of that nature.
That said, I, I agree with you, Paul. I think we need to be very careful about how this plays out, and how aggressive the changes would be over and above history. Because it, it, it puts, it puts a strain on several different areas in the town.
Okay. Moving on to the landscaping and screening proffer. The applicant agrees to install, maintain, and if necessary, replace the landscaping and screening improvements shown on the site plan in conformance with the following. That the landscape buffer areas shall be maintained in good, healthy state by the owner of the property, fallen, diseased, and dead plant growth shall be removed and replaced with comparable at maturity, healthy planting materials. The property may include additional planting, signage, and/or fencing as otherwise permitted under the town zoning ordinance. Again, the dumpsters and/or trash cans not including convenience containers shall be reasonably screened from public view at ground level. And the final component of that is the golf carts and bicycles shall be stored overnight in the locations designated on the site plan, with a max of six golf carts, et cetera, et cetera. So I would presume if, if you were supportive of eliminating golf carts from the site, then D, the landscaping associated with said, and screening of said, would be removed as well. So I really would focus our conversation on A, B, and C. If there's anything further you think needs to be added, or amended, or commented on relative to those proffers.
I have nothing.
Can you define convenience container for me?
The dumpsters. Sorry. As I said, we had conversations along the way, we had never committed to one direction or another, just because I was researching the cost and how the town processes its trash, and he was talking with a vendor to see if that was even viable, possible, how it could be handled in that regard, so.
So if convenience containers mean dumpsters, then it says dumpsters and/or trash cans, but not including convenience containers, not including the dumpsters.
Then I guess I'm really not clear what a convenience container would be. I thought we put in some wiggle room, I, I'll be honest, I failed to see the word dumpsters in front of me, so. So that may be, we either need clarification, or the convenience containers would have to be, you would not support that component of this. Sorry, let me finish taking that note. Okay. And then lighting, any lighting of the property shall be directed in a way to minimize glare on public roads and adjacent structures.
Just an acknowledgement of following town ordinance, dark sky, and all that stuff.
Yes, and, and that's part of the caveat up above, of compliance with the zoning ordinance.
Well, if we're taking out the golf carts, if you look on a flat here, the sketch, the lighting is associated with the structure of the house.
There's also lighting with the sign, too.
Good. All right.
So, those were, candidly, those were proffers that he extended to the town as part of this application, based upon conversations and issues I had identified early on in this review process. So I don't want you to feel restricted that, that you can't raise and consider any other conditions. I think I've identified a few that I'd like us to talk, you know, make sure we formalize if, if that's where we're headed. But is there any, anything else, since this application process has started and issues raised to your attention, that you feel has not been adequately identified and potentially addressed with some sort of solution through the proffers offered by the applicant? Did I miss something? Did I forget something of consideration relative to his application?
I have nothing more to offer.
Okay. So, with that said, as we referenced earlier, if you are, if you feel that you are supportive of this application, and we might have a path that the planning commission could support with some modifications, as I mentioned, I think we should also include
Okay.
As part of your motion, associated with the future work plan for us, not just on this property, but how it affects a lot of Mason Avenue. And where it butts back onto the residential lots, where we don't have fully defined alleys and pathways to service those establishments and buildings and businesses, I would hope that we can add that to the scope of work of this body, as we move forward on the comp plan work, to see if we can address that.
Even if, I got a question, even if we got to a point where the planning commission approved it, and it went to council, as zoning administrator, you basically have final say?
No, I don't.
But you, you, okay. You provide counsel, just as we do, valuable input to their decision process. And what is the likelihood that this isn't considered legal nonconforming going to do to the decision process? Are we, are we asking him to go through, jump through these hoops without any, any assurance he's going to get what he wants? Is, is the basic bottom line of the question?
He is petitioning for a rezoning. He is petitioning to move from R1 to C1.
I know, we're, we're fighting like tooth and nail to not make it, make that not happen. So, and if we, if we head him down this way, but he still can't make it, he still can't get the, the results he wants, we may be stuck with doing that, if that's what we decide makes sense.
I presume that's what, what we are still primarily discussing and debating, is his application of rezoning this from R1 to C1. So all the proffers and conditions that we just went through and discussed and touched upon would be incorporated, included as part of any vote you may take to rezone this, and to recommend favorable consideration of that rezoning. Again, anything you put forward, as you know, goes to the town council, it is up to them to take final action on it.
Understood, understood. Any other comments?
Do we need a motion first, before we can add a discussion?
Just, no, a reminder again, Katie's pointed out, this has to be fleshed out in terms of what the comprehensive plan is going to say about all this, and we haven't even begun to go down that road yet.
The current comprehensive or the future?
The, the one we're working on, you know.
Can't wait for that.
Not going to be able to factor that in, it's an unknown right now. You don't know where that is going, and it's going to take another six to nine months in order to get things established.
But we need to get a work, a body of work added to that.
This needs to be based on the 2016 plan.
Yep, absolutely.
Well.
Which he has done.
I think Katie did a good job of showing the 2016 plan doesn't allow for this.
Well, except for that issue that I have there, I think it does. You know, the ownership issue and, and the use of the hotel and the land, I think it is legal nonconforming.
And, and, and I will say, because that was in last month's staff report, I gave the analysis as it relates to the comprehensive plan. There's a little bit of inconsistency in it as it relates to historic district and its character and significance and layout versus all of the other components in the comprehensive plan supportive of Mason Avenue as your commercial center, and its operations relative to the economy and economic features and benefits for the, for the town as a whole. So I think it is a, there are elements of the comprehensive plan, as in almost every instance where you're going to find some section of the comprehensive plan that supports it, and then you might find another section that doesn't fully support it.
I'm sorry, but, but, you know, from, for what I read, I thought legal nonconforming was dead on arrival, if we can resurrect that in any way, that would make all the difference in the world.
I don't think you can, and, and I'm making that decision.
I don't think I understand what Paul's saying.
I understand what Paul is saying, I'm just saying, my position as a zoning administrator, I, I view legal nonconforming as not viable as an option. So your consideration at this point is, will you rezone to commercial one? The application before you tonight.
I'd like to make a comment regarding the legal.
Why can't we pursue, whether Paul's, whether Paul's assertion has any merit?
I'd like to just address that for a second, from my perspective. If you were to come and use my property for four years, and do whatever it is you want to do on it, because you were doing that for four years doesn't make that a legal use of my property that you get to continue to do, just because maybe you then purchased it later on. So I don't think, i-if somebody uses your property illegally, you don't get to memorialize that use into the future. So that, that's where I guess I would disagree with your perspective on that. Any other comment? Can we move on? Are you finished?
Unless somebody needs clarity at this point, where, what your potential processes are from here, I do think a motion could be considered. I would like help in crafting that motion with associated conditions. It's, this is a tricky one to write, I'm not going to, you know, shy anybody away from that. We may need to take a little bit of time to make sure we, we have it fully written out before we take action on it, but I think if, if it sounds like there might be support with the right conditions associated with a rezoning of this lot from R1 to C1.
Let me go on with that a little bit.
Sure.
I was going to wait until we had a motion for this and then discuss it, but I have a couple of different points. First, during the, our previous meeting when there was a discussion by the public about how these proffers would help businesses on Mason, it only helps the businesses that are within the hotel property. There is no, even an adjacent property, there is no allowance made to assist those people. So I think the design of the hotel, the way the hotel was built, created the problem. It, it's the same when the Board of Zoning Appeals looks at something. If you create the issue, you don't get to just say, well, now give me a variance for it. So the courtyard space, while it is a beautiful space, and it is a great amenity for the hotel, but if you're going to build something, you should make sure you take care of your service needs first, and then when you're able to, to put those amenities in, you should do that. A, there could be a redesign of the courtyard to accommodate some of this, that would then resolve the issue. And, and finally, to me, this violates the comprehensive plan. Our comprehensive plan wants to maintain the, the residential character, and so those are three issues that I have that I just wanted to bring out at this point. Yeah, the nice thing about this commission is we don't have, a, a, a simple majority is sufficient. Not, not to say, not to say that your input isn't valuable, it's just that for the, for the purpose of, of this particular discussion, which is already gnarly, we can still do due diligence and move forward as appropriate. Because you provide valuable inputs, historical inputs, so if we come back to revisit, how did we get here years from now, we'll have that in place to say, oh, okay, we should have put in, paid more attention. Okay? You need a motion, right?
All right, I'm willing to make a motion, Mr. Chair. I'll make a motion that we rezone this to C1 with the proffers being addressed on deliveries, waste management, the golf and bike storage, and the landscaping relative to convenience containers being addressed, as we've discussed.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Go ahead.
I think we do, do a discussion.
Discussion, that's fine, go ahead, go ahead.
And if I may, even before you discuss as a whole, I think we're close. I'd like an opportunity, and I probably can't do it all this evening, time-wise. We can't require the proffers to be amended. We can make conditions of our own associated with your vote. So I almost want to separate out the issues, and to indicate, I think I've got it clear, which proffers we have. which proffers we have concerns with as presented to us and would be find more amenable if they came more in line with the conditions you would like to see. And I believe the conditions are, at this point, the uses as identified in the first section of the proffers, and they are limited to those very three specific issues relative to propane, deliveries. Services in the, and now the storage, the waste storage facilities, but no golf carts.
Right.
And within the waste management, you've indicated that we would prefer dumpsters, not the town issued trash receptacles, and an increased frequency during the high season, during the May to, somebody needs to tell me what you consider the end of your season, Labor Day, Columbus Day, mid-October.
It's got to November now.
So somewhere we'd have to define the season that you think an increased frequency of at least two times a week should also be part of that.
Make it March to November.
Yeah, he should know.
The season is getting longer on the both ends.
That's why I'm asking.
That's normally, that will accommodate most of it.
So we can't consider the proffer, we have to take a piece of residentially zoned property and change it to commercial property if we want to support this motion, is that what you're saying?
That is his application.
Yeah, the application.
Yes.
And that's motion on paper.
That's right, I mean, that's what I'm saying, but you can't consider the proffers.
No, you can, you can consider the proffer, absolutely. Yeah, right.
The law is very, very nuanced in proffers, is about all I can tell you.
Yeah.
So.
It's because.
We cannot, we cannot require a certain proffer to be extended to us. We can establish conditions, which we do this all the time, when you are choosing to advance an application, you may establish certain conditions. Your parking must be this way. And we want to add five trees as well as part of your landscaping plan, and so those are conditions you sometimes will add to other applications before you. This gets a little nuanced because proffers get recorded, they have to be voluntarily offered by the applicant.
Right.
And the conditions that we are trying to articulate at this point, he may come forward and say he will amend his proffer statement to reflect your conditions and incorporate them whole as a proffer statement, but I can't say that we're going to amend the proffers. That's, that's something the applicant has to voluntarily agree to.
Yeah, I'm coming up with that.
As I said, it's a nuanced position, the law does see it as very nuanced, they are not highly supportive of any locality that tries to compel the proffers and say, if you don't actually put these in, then we will not approve.
Right.
So we hope to articulate them in such a way that he would be willing to amend his proffer statement to reflect these conditions you're putting forward.
And right now, all the lots from FIG to Bay are, on Randolph are residential, is that correct?
No. No, we got commercial.
There's some commercial that touches some of the corners, and so I'm a little hesitant to say that's true.
Close, okay.
Close, but may not be wholly there, so.
Did they own Mason?
Oh, they don't. Well, when you, when you talk to him about the proffers, make sure he clearly understands, we have no, this commission has no interest in ancillary services beyond what he's doing as a hotel.
So if, again, just so I can summarize all the things I've heard this evening. So we find the inclusion of other service-related deliveries as stated in his proffer statement is too broad, and we need to have some better clarification and specificity of purpose, but not necessarily the recipient, meaning which business or building receives it. It's within the identified addresses he's included in his proffer statement, but I think we need some clarity on purpose. If not, we would not find other service-related deliveries a condition we would impose, we would just refine it to propane tank deliveries. Am I correct in saying that piece relative to deliveries?
Yes.
Okay. And then two, waste management. Again, we feel dumpsters, one dumpster at a minimum, potentially two dumpsters should be required with an increased frequency of delivery at least twice a week from March to November. And then with the condition that if the hotel should achieve an expansion, whether it be to Seven Strawberry Street or a related property, that the site plan be amended to reflect an increased dumpster accommodation, to reflect the trash needs increase, and/or an increase, a further increase in the service delivery time from beyond two months, two times a week to some greater frequency to address the waste needs of the increased hotel space. And then three, the elimination or no provisioning of golf cart storage or charging or bike storage on this lot. And for the landscaping, we are supportive of that condition remaining as a condition of whatever approval you give as well. What is reflected on the site plan and in their proffers, that would be the same condition you would like to carry forward with in the level and nature of the landscaping and its maintenance, if said. But again, all removal as it relates to the golf cart storage component.
Right.
Well, with further explanation on convenience.
And convenience centers. I actually just wrote that as to remove those words, convenience.
Yeah.
What do we call it? Convenience.
Fuzzy at best.
Yeah.
And already a nuanced environment.
Containers, thank you, I can't even read my own writing. Okay.
All right.
I think those are your conditions.
Yeah.
Have I misstated anything?
No, no, good, good.
Okay.
Any other comments before we move on?
Well, we have a motion and a second discussion.
We've done discussion, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Well, interesting, okay.
So it's two against, did I hear that correctly, Cannon?
I'll go with four.
Jim, if you were four. Okay, three, four.
Three, four, two against, I just wanted to make sure I caught that correctly.
Yep.
Okay.
So it carries.
So as I further mentioned, it doesn't have to be a direct motion, but I would like to ensure that we've identified a real issue going on here on Mason as it abuts back to the residential lots. So I am, I am imploring upon the Planning Commission as we move forward in our comp plan work that we identify and make sure this gets fully raised, and hopefully we start to address it in the comp plan process this fall. I don't really wish this to fall away because I don't think this will be the last application of this magnitude coming before us.
Yeah, exactly.
We are seeing growth occur all throughout the Mason Avenue and businesses, it's not the last time we're going to be faced with this.
It's important, as we go through the, this iteration of the top plan, comp plan, that the entire community understands what we're trying to do, and they get a chance to, you know, put their comment on it.
So while we have Ms. Loomis here, because I know she's a directly impacted property owner, the process from here, this recommendation will be conveyed both to Mr. Gomino and to the town council. For, for the town council, we are looking to get this on their agenda on June 16th, June 16th. So if Ms. Loomis would, and anyone else would like to attend, that would be your next opportunity because council is the one who would actually vote for any rezoning of any property.
Right.
So we will be providing this recommendation for that particular meeting.
One last comment, I have a concern over the property owner creating a hardship that then the town has to kind of jump through hoops, rezone something because they've created the hardship for themselves. I think this is a dangerous slippery slope that, that we potentially offer to, to anyone who says they want to do the same, the same type of behavior. This is, this is, to your point, there's history to this particular piece of property where it didn't go, the, approval for the facade did not go through the standard process. It was more like he did it and then apologized later rather than went for approval properly. Is that, that's what I think appears, no?
I don't, I don't know all the history, I wasn't here.
No, I, that, I think that happened, I think Libby may be able to come, I don't know, that happened before me. I heard that he, he went, but then he.
My understanding is, there was something that was approved, and then a different thing that occurred. So when you board out the whole front with.
That is correct.
With.
The historic, yeah, that was pre-me, yes.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Can I ask you a weird question?
Yeah, right, right. And it is, it is, my concern, nope, to your point, we don't encourage that behavior. Not that we did the first time, but we didn't do anything dramatic to express our displeasure.
And again, I don't know the whole.
I don't either.
History associated with it, so I don't know if there were any fines or penalties associated with it.
I don't think so.
I really don't, I do not know.
Yeah, I do, but it's not appropriate for this forum.
Right.
Yeah, that's fine.
And so this is a standalone application for rezoning. I understand you may feel he's not coming to the table with clean hands, but I have to deal with the application before us.
Exactly, 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 exactly. And, and we just have to be careful, make sure we do due diligence for every application that comes in so we don't get Garcelle boxed into a corner.
And I'm hopeful any future expansions of any of the properties have this level of scrutiny. I don't think there's always been sufficient attention paid to, to these sorts of details, like the trash and things of that nature. So I'm hopeful that we're setting a better standard of review in the department as a whole of this.
Absolutely.
So.
As I've said before, you, you and the history you bring with you has added tremendous value to the role you're playing. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else on this topic?
Not on this one. We're finished with, we are done with unfinished business, and Mr. Chairman, you're welcome to continue with the agenda.
New business. Discussion and possible vote on conditional use permit, 2022-03, application from Michelle and Nathan Davidson at 211 Madison Avenue, tax map 831-210 and 211 in the residential two zoning districts for an accessory dwelling pursuant to CCZ0, section 42 on the swimming pool, section 32C5. Discussion?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead, Paul.
I'll make a motion that the Planning Commission, if they would recommend that the conditional use permit for 211 Madison Avenue pursuant to our zoning ordinance 4.2J for the accessory dwelling unit and for the in-ground pool pursuant to our ordinance 3.2C5. You recommend it?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So carried. Okay. B, scheduled public hearing on conditional use permit 2022-04, application from Barbara O'Hare at 11 Randolph Avenue, tax map 83A3-2-3-1 for an accessory dwelling unit pursuant to CCZO, section 4-2J.
As I noted, she's seeking for, to obtain a conversion of an existing 720 square foot garage for half of that to be reallocated for an accessory dwelling unit. She has provided a signed ADU affidavit and is aware of the requirements regarding the length of stay, but has indicated in her narrative that she's primarily looking to utilize as personal office space for herself with the associated amenities that rise to the occasion of being it defined as an accessory dwelling unit. The property is in zoning compliance, and she's not seeking to add any square footage but to convert a portion of an existing accessory structure for this purpose, and currently provides one on-lot parking space which would comply with our ordinance requirements since no on-lot parking spaces are required for the principal residence in the R1 district. So I do find that she has met the requirements of our zoning ordinance, and we are seeking your authorization to send this to public hearing at your July calendar.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we schedule a public hearing on July 7th for the conditional use permit.
July 5th, sorry.
Fifth, is it fifth? Conditional use permit for an accessory dwelling unit at 11 Randolph Avenue.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So carried. I will make a comment, just because of the date, I won't be here that week.
And I will not be, and we may have to poll.
Oh, yes. Are the other three here?
I think so.
So is.
Lord willing.
Well, Bill should be back, so.
I'm sorry, it was anticlimactic.
I just want to recognize today, as many of you know, today is Paul Gosling's big birthday.
It is.
I wasn't sure, I want that in the record, I guess.
I'd like to remove my motion.
Happy birthday.
I did not know, happy birthday, that's right.
Thank you for letting us know.
Almost got away with it.
If I could, we will poll the board, and if July 5th does not work, we will pick another date, hopefully in July, and advertise it for such.
That's fine, that's fine. I got family over this, you know, Fourth of July holiday.
Okay, okay.
I got a full house.
Yeah.
So it'll be a new date to be determined, right?
If, if we don't, if we can't achieve a quorum, then we will poll for a new date sometime in July to hold your regular meeting. But for now, assume it's July 5th.
It just won't be the 12th, because that's a working session.
So.
All right, well, you'll let us know.
We will let you know, yes.
Um, report of officers and convicted.
Okay, I have a couple of items, let me pull that forward, hang on. Somewhere I had it in here. Here it comes, no, I got it clipped to the back, sorry, too many things on my table. So in my interim report, there have been a few, I won't call them full plaques, that got approved, we had some infill lots within various Bay Creek subdivisions that came forward for finally creating new lots within those infill lots. So I have included them, this is probably more information you care to, but since it's not a unique standalone subdivision, I needed to show you the context of where the infill lot is and then what was being proposed for creation. So you have both an aerial map view and then the approved final plat to show the number of lots that were being created out of each parcel. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those, but I hope they are self-explanatory. With that said, for the Board of Zoning Appeals, again, we are required to give you notification of applications going in at this.
It's really there, I know a concern on subdivisions, we're talking about water, wastewater usage. Does this fall into that kind of subdivision plot, or no, they're just taking existing and splitting further?
We, they met with the town manager prior to them being even allowed to submit these to us for consideration and approval. So Mr. Hosey had signed off on these lots being created because they were within the existing subdivisions. So, so basically, the pipes have already been installed, they're there, it's just filling out the, out the prettiness of it.
Hasn't most of all the infrastructure, isn't it already in place in Bay Creek?
It's in place definitely on the main roads, but as new subdivisions are coming online. So as you start to lay, lay the, the main road going in and then what may be the four or five roads that go off of it for subdivision, no, none of that infrastructure's been installed for the creation of a new subdivision.
Right.
So.
I did not realize that.
Right, so there's, there is probably, they call them under the Akamak Plantation PUD, the subdivisions go up, I think, all the way through, oh, P, Q, R, S, they're not really named, they were placeholders when the PUD got created.
Yeah, right.
And as each one is finally coming online and being considered for construction, et cetera, they get a better name. They no longer are.
They get a marketing name.
They get a marketing name. And then as, as we finally sign off, and while we had an idea of how many lots would be in there and what the layout would look, we had a general. concept that's part of the PUD ordinance itself, there's a concept map, that, those get finalized, and so we then tweak up what, the exact square footage of every lot, where it is, the open space, the road itself, so then, then that's when all of those are coming online to the sewer system, and that infrastructure's getting installed and added into capacity.
Okay.
So. So with the BZA, at this point, we have a couple of applications that, if not finalized, they are close to getting finalized to go before the BZA at this point in time. Definitely the one I can say is, is item B, which is a variance application from Nancy Rooney at 107 Mason Avenue to allow first floor residential in the rear of an existing building in the Commercial One zoning district is a completed application and will be going to public hearing in July. I'm working with two other applicants, one is for the variance application from Spend Custis at Lot 100 on Washington Avenue to allow an existing shed to remain on the premise without a principal use of a main dwelling unit in the Residential One zoning district.
Can, can you say how long that has been there?
Couple of years, I don't know exactly when.
It's pretty recent.
Like maybe two, two or three years.
Okay, okay.
Would be my guess on this. I'm saying it's tentative right now because we're, we're trying to see if he can get a survey completed in time to still make it onto this agenda or not, knowing how backed up all of the, the outside services are. So if, if he doesn't have a survey completed, this will get delayed for a month, but we know it's coming forward. And part of it is because he needed to move forward somehow, some way, because we were getting ready to do enforcement action on this issue, yes. And the last one is, I've been working with an intended purchaser of the lots at the corner of Washington Avenue and Bay Avenue, which is known as the former Old Ferry Lots, I think people would recall it that, potentially for two variance applications concerning the Chesapeake Bay Act and the allowing of, of two lots, the creation of those two lots in a new configuration, and to also seek to allow a dwelling unit to be placed on each lot, which would heavily encroach into the Resource Protection Act of the Chesapeake Bay Act. So again, we are still working through a lot of paperwork associated with that, both in terms of the site plan and some associated engineering, and lots of stuff is still coming in. I know word is out, it's circulating in the community, so I want to make people aware, they're talking with us, we're working with them, it would have to go before the BZA for variance application. I don't know if it's going to make it onto the July calendar, or if it's going to be moved to the August calendar, but it's coming for consideration.
For these two lots, is there any position on either of those lots where you could put a resident, or no, the lots are so close, it's.
They are almost whole, they're, they're, there's huge chunks that fall within the RPA.
Okay, so you couldn't build.
Not by, not, not by right without some sort of relief. And so that's part of this, is some, some relief can and should be considered. Under the Chesapeake Act, it was never designated as an intensely developed area, it's like around the harbor is, portions of the harbor have that designation, which gives them relief from having to comply fully with the Bay Act. This lot was never afforded that designation by the town when, when the Chesapeake Bay came into existence and we adopted it. But we, the town zoned it residential, so it gives some implication that we presume some residence could happen there. Whether that's, two lots can be created out of that and each given a residence, that's still to be known, that's why they're going to the BZA for their, that consideration, as to how large a, a structure could be and how it gets placed on it, those are all things that would have to be considered as part of that application. And I've been working with them at length, and I'd have to say probably for the last four months on this issue to see how we even get this to the town for consideration, so. So I just wanted to make it, put it out there formally because I know it's circulating in some circles of the community, especially those that reside in that area of town, so I want them to know there will be a legal process, that this will be viewed and vetted, and they will have an opportunity to come speak, and it will be before the Board of Zoning Appeals. So. Lastly, or the last two items I have is, if you had not heard, the town council did not approve our rezoning text amendment associated with accessory dwelling units and associated definitions for them. I was going to expand upon that further and provide you those comments, I've held off because I know I've had conversations with the town manager on this issue, and he is, I think, placing this on for the June 16th town council meeting to request some further clarification and direction from them and a more solid position than where we thought we were heading into this, because clearly we weren't on the same mind frame of town council because they voted us down. So versus us trying to spin, spin our wheels again at the moment and see if we come back with some more modifications or changes, he's asked for, for some clarification on some things. So I'm not asking you to take up anything tonight or put it forward on a, on a future calendar.
So you do not have the ability to approve conditional use permits, that's, that was part of that decision.
Everything stays as a conditional use permit.
Right, well, the process stays as is.
Stays as is, exactly the same, we're going to keep doing what we've been doing. So until we hear further, and as soon as we get the word from the town managers to where council sits on this issue, then we'll, we'll take it back up in the near future. And then finally, you have before you, as, as we practiced this evening, we've changed our public hearing process. Town council did do a revision to their code of ethics and meeting rules of order policy. At their last meeting, they updated and amended that, and you can find those specific changes on page eight of that document under a section called Addendum One, Public Hearing Procedures. So at next month's meeting, I will have your bylaws for you to readopt with those changes in there, we just, we did make them effective with tonight's meeting and how we're holding our public hearings, just so you're aware of those changes.
Is that what this statement says?
You have to re-sign on the policy that we provided the policy to you.
The existing, but we'll, we'll have.
No, the, the new one.
That is the signature page from the town council policy.
For the new one.
Yes, and so you've gotten the signature page again, we're going to need you to sign that document so that you acknowledge that you received a copy of the new amended policy from town council. And that's it of my report.
Cool. Next regular meeting is until July 5th, it's six o'clock.
Maybe.
Exactly, exactly.
Did I not write down the date of the joint meeting? I didn't.
It's the 12th.
I know, but I didn't put it on the agenda.
Yeah, it was, it was fairly, I think, I'm pretty sure it was only declared as the 12th.
It is, it's.
Yes.
I know you each got an.
It was something that Libby put out.
Right, you got, you got an email to that effect, I'm just trying to get it out to the public at large. Helps to tell me the dates of the actual meetings.
So it is the 12th, not the 5th? No, no, she's talking about joint, not about.
Sorry, the joint.
Planning committee.
So I, I know that had been asked a couple of meetings ago, where are we on the comp plan work? It has been progressing, and so, yes, you're going to get the existing conditions report, which has been just about finished and vetted, and so now we're going to release it as a whole. It doesn't mean there can't be further changes with, with, with the full commission review, full town council review, but primarily, it's been a, a small group of us, meaning it's been Paul, it's been Bill, it's been myself, and Mr. Hosey have been doing the initial draft reviews and edit some comments back to them. So now you all get a crack at it and tell us what we missed.
Are you happy with it so far?
I, I think so far, yes. And so again, this is the existing, it's the existing conditions report, but from this, then you're going to start to see the other chapters, and what really is what we're all waiting for is the goals and, and objectives and the vision and, and steps we need to help get us there.
I, I think it's, it's much closer to what Bill was pushing for early on.
Yeah.
In terms of the additional graphics.
Yes.
And it's going to have a singular voice because it's coming from one organization, if nothing else.
Yeah.
So I'm looking forward to seeing.
Yeah. I can't wait to see the whole finished zoning map.
Yeah, it's that too.
And I have, I've spent an extraordinary amount of time with the consultant going through their maps, and so I think we're going to have a good set of base maps at the start of this, and, which will be fantastic. I'm so excited for that. That's all I have.
Make a motion, I'll be your adjutant.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So carried. Thank you very much.